Okay, I am going to need a motion and a second for approval of the agenda.
So many.
Seven. Okay, all those in favor? Any oppositions? No. Okay, so we can start out with more dialogue. Anybody have anything they'd like to talk about this evening?
No.
Said no? Okay, good, alright. Any communications from the audience? Okay, then we'll move on down to Shirley Beeser.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay, this evening I'd like to recognize our featured teacher. Again, this probably should've been in October, but I was out of commission. So, we want to recognize Mrs. Weekly. Mrs. Weekly has been in our district since 1997. This is her 20th year of teaching. She is an excellent teacher and that statement has been made in almost every one of her evaluations by every one of her supervisors. She speaks softly to her students and she shows a great amount of respect. She is always well-prepared for class and spends numerous hours preparing her lessons to engage students. She's been instrumental in all the new initiatives for Truman and our district like accelerated schools, balanced literacy pathways, iReady, you name it. And she has served as grade level chair and many others, has served on many other committees. Mrs. Weekly has a very positive attitude and is truly a teacher leader.
Mrs. Weekly, we thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I would like to recognize our heartland hero and that would be Meadow Heights Church, I'm sorry, and Paul Barnes, Mr. Barnes. And Mr. Wiles, you can come on up. Dr. Wiles. Yes. Okay. These gentlemen went way beyond what the call of duty. We needed some classrooms painted at Truman that had not been painted for 12 or 13 years. They jumped in with a bunch of students and probably, what, four or five adults, not very many adults, not one piece of paint on the floor, not one splatter, not one mess, and it was done in, what, two hours?
Maybe closer to three.
Three hours? But five, five and a half classrooms, now that is just remarkable, that's amazing. And not only that, Mr. Wiles helped at the very beginning of the school to help unload kindergarteners from their cars, showing them the way into Truman, gave a lending hand there. In the past, you all have, I think, done some landscaping at WL Johns. They have even done some blacktop repair, is that on the playground, I understand? Anything that we've asked them to do, they have done and they're certainly our heroes. And you all made such a terrific difference in our classrooms. The teachers were so excited, they went out and made new curtains or bought some. They bought all kinds of things to match. I mean, it just gave a whole different feeling in the whole school. So, thank you so much.
Well, we're glad we can help just a little bit, so thank you.
Well, and again, not only were these people from Farmington, you had Frederick Town students and probably other places too as well.
We did.
So, coming to us to help us, that's amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. So, what are you guys doing this weekend? Are you busy?
Then we have a small video. Mrs. Sykes will present that over our early childhood program.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Sykes. I'm the lead teacher at WL Johns. I just want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to showcase our program and our school and what we're all about. WL Johns houses, has housed in the past, early childhood, special education, parents as teachers, caring communities, speech, occupational, physical therapies, along with the Title One pre-kindergarten programs since the early 1990s. Currently, we're serving 150-plus students and our families each day. And the thought was brought up that what can we do a little bit more to promote what's going on in our building? So, we're excited to debut the first ever WL Johns video featuring our building and the services we offer to students and families of the Farmington, our seventh school district. We're very proud of the work we do. We know that we're building that solid foundation to prepare students for future success. Thank you for your continued support of our programs.
The Farmington School District provides educational services to a number of three- and four-year-old children. WL Johns Early Childhood Center houses federally funded Title One preschool and early childhood special services that include educational services, speech, physical, and occupational therapies. Both programs offer a safe and nurturing learning environment that promotes physical, social, emotional, and cognitive development of young children while responding to the needs of families.
My name is Debbie. My son Mason attends school here at WL Johns. When we started here, Mason had just turned three. He essentially was not talking other than just a few single words.
My name is Jada Kleima and my son Kayden, who is now six, went to WL Johns Early Childhood Development. When Kayden started, he had so little speech, practically none, and he was shy, he was introverted.
My name is Sonia Hampton. My personal involvement with WL Johns has been through all two grandchildren. The granddaughter was born with cerebral ataxia and has a movement disorder. Her speech, when she came to WL Johns, was almost nonexistent. She spoke with a series of grunts and moans, not really words. The three-year-old grandson came along and he imitated her speech.
Each day, the children are greeted by friendly staff that are eager to meet their needs. The day begins with whole group learning focusing on early literacy and mathematical development. Throughout the day, other areas of learning are incorporated in small group activities where teachers provide hands-on experiences that are differentiated and meaningful to the students. Children are given many opportunities to choose their learning while teachers facilitate and foster development. Some of those opportunities include building with blocks, reading books, painting or creating projects, playing dress-up, and working with technology that includes laptops, computers, smartboards, and iPads. WL Johns partners with families and schools, educators, and other programs to offer students limitless possibilities to connect them with their world.
And now he is totally, you would not be able to pick him out of the classroom, but the student that once upon a time had those delays and had those needs because he has had such wonderful intervention and I just can't say enough about our program.
Now Kayden is active, he's outgoing, he's talkative. It's just amazing what this program has done for him.
Ultimately, WL Johns is giving these children the opportunity to succeed psychologically and to succeed socially in the community. Gives them the tools they need to learn and to grow and ultimately to become successful, productive adults.
We are paving the way for future architects, engineers, teachers, medical professionals, and leaders within our community. WL Johns is every student, every day. Wow, wow, the WL Johns! So, thank you.
I just wanted to share this comment. We can certainly tell the difference in Truman with the kids that have gone through WL Johns. It's amazing. And when we look at retention, the students that we have to hold back, they're not our WL Johns students. And that says something because their program does prepare our kids for kindergarten. So, we are very, very proud of this program.
Thank you so much.
Great job, guys. Great job.
Okay, any student voices this evening? CTA report? Okay, so, Mr. Rubel?
Yes, thank you. I know, along with myself and several board members, I was honored to attend multiple Veterans Days celebrations throughout the district on November 1st and 8th. This included the honors tour at the high school, which was a fantastic event and amazing to be a part of that. And great job to the high school, the band, everyone, GROTC, all of our athletics for putting on that event. Again, that was a fantastic, fantastic event for our entire community involving high school, middle school, and many activities throughout the, throughout the district. I was also on the 8th, able to attend ceremonies at Washington Franklin Roosevelt and Jefferson Elementarys. And kudos to the staff and the students for putting on amazing ceremonies. That's the first time, obviously, I've always been at the breakfast at the high school greeting and talking to our veterans. So, it was great to see all of those activities going on. And again, amazing turnout on each one of those activities. Also, we have, here in a second, we've got a technology sharing session from Mrs. Southern and Mrs. Winch related to a Midwest Google Summit that they were able to attend here recently. And I know Sarah Long was able to attend an Apple Summit. So, we're excited to hear some of the amazing things that we're learning at conferences and we're actually bringing back to the district and helping to support our student learning. So, that's, that's what I've got. We've also got the retired staff luncheon that will be this Friday at the Centene Center. So, if anyone out there is a retired staff member, we would love to have you come out and join us for, you know, our, our thanking you for the work that you've put in and being a retired member of the, of the Farmington School District. And that's it.
Okay, alright, thank you. So, it looks like we're ready for Mr. White, Ms. Southern, and Ms. Winch.
Ah, she's going old-school.
Well, I will tell you that we could go on for days and hours on end, but I promised everybody we'd get out of here within five minutes. And Mindy did too. We had the opportunity to go to the Google Summit in Wisconsin and I can just tell you, it was so amazing and so rejuvenating. You know, we, it was eye-opening, like you wouldn't believe. And you can see here that Mindy and I got to try the Google Glass on. And the Goog, yeah, I'm going to, I'm trying to think of the words to use. I, we went to breakfast that morning and I see this lady standing at the end of the table, the buffet table, and she says, "Glass, take picture." And I'm like, "What the heck is she doing?" And she says it again, "Glass, take picture." And these glasses are her, are the computer. And so, we, you know, Mindy was like, "I just want to see these things." So, we got to put, try them out. And literally, you put these glasses on and you see this little computer, like, right here, and it is everything that you would see. And you swipe the frame and go to the slide or the website or wherever you wanted to go to. And stood there and took a picture of Mindy and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, this is so awesome." So, anyway, that was pretty, you know, that was, like I said, a very eye-opening experience for us. As a building principal and instructional leader, it's our job to ensure our students are getting a high-quality rigorous education that creates lifelong learners who are college and career-ready. And we've heard that over and over again for years now that that's what we need to be doing. And wow, what we can do with the use of technology to help our kids become even more college and career-ready than what they already are is just amazing. I thought, I knew, I had no clue what I didn't know, which is a mountain. We got to hear lots of presenters and one of them that really stuck out was from Christian Long. He's the vice president of Canon Designs and he said, "Our classrooms shouldn't be classrooms, it should be base camps of wonder." And that is so true. And they don't call them classrooms. They did not once use the word classrooms. They're called learning spaces. And what, get on Google it and Google learning spaces because you would just be amazed at what's there. It's spaces where you would give kids tools to imagine, create, explore, invent, collaborate, and take journeys where they never thought possible. I said, "This is not a typical classroom. It's the transformation of four walls into an exciting virtual classroom, learning space, where students produce original ideas, projects, and inventions." And Mindy is going to walk you through and just give you a snippet of what our students could and will be doing.
When I was in the fifth grade, my dad gave me one of these and I thought it was the coolest thing ever. It was the topographical kind, you know, where I could feel where the mountains were and I just thought that was really bringing the world right to my bedroom, literally. What our students have available now through Google and a variety of other services is just unbelievable. I don't want to stand in front of the view here. This is a human with the Google Street View camera on. He, his job is to walk around the world and take pictures. And maybe you saw this car in Farmington earlier this year, that's what they're doing as well. We're discovering there's all kinds of jobs out there, new jobs that are emerging every day that we just didn't realize. How would you like to walk around the world and take pictures, you know, with a camera strapped to your back? Because of things like the Google Street View, we're allowed to take our kids on tours throughout the world and our kids can create tours. So, when my son asks me, you know, "What's it like here?" or "Where is this?", I say, "Google Earth it." And this is an example of Google Maps and what you can do with those. And it's about a minute fifty-four long.
Explore your world through the immersive imagery of the new Google Maps. There are a few easy ways to access imagery. The info card below the search box and the carousel located at the bottom of the screen. First, zoom in and click any point on the map. The address and Street View imagery will appear on an info card. Click the thumbnail to enter Street View. Then orient yourself by holding down the mouse and dragging or using the compass. Then, just click the road you want to travel down. Want to check out a local business before you visit? Dive into Street View or explore the interior by clicking See Inside. If you'd like to see the world through someone else's eyes, check out our user-contributed photos denoted by a camera icon. But don't stop there. View the new photo tours by clicking thumbnails marked with a play icon. This immersive 3D experience is generated from photos uploaded by users like you, available from more than 60,000 popular sites worldwide. Finally, explore the earth from above by entering Earth View. If you use a supported browser, you can zoom in close and see buildings rendered in 3D. The control panel in the bottom right will allow you to tilt and rotate your view. Or zoom all the way up. And enjoy the view. Meet the new Google Maps.
So, this is just one example of the many things that we can offer our kids by providing them opportunities to get their hands on technology and not just consume the information, but then kids can take things like Google Maps and they can make tours themselves. They can figure out how much money they need to plan a trip somewhere in the world. Or you want to see the Coliseum, you can go there, right from the comfort of your desk in your classroom. So, wonder is about being immersed and lost in possibility and we're asking, is our classroom and our schools, are they base camps of wonder? And we'd just like to encourage everyone to put the tools in the hands of the students and let them create. And that's all we have. Thank you very much for the opportunity to go. It was a great experience.
Thank you very much. I just got one question. Do we know what percentage of our students that doesn't have internet access when they go home? You know, have we ever checked that out or anything?
I think that classroom teachers know because we have a lot of, we have a lot of kids that we like for them to use iReady programs or Do. I have teachers who are now doing lessons on Google Docs and the teachers are sharing that with them and they're doing projects at home and bringing them in. So, in order to do that, they have to know which kids they need to provide an opportunity for after school that don't have internet access. But as far as the percentage, we don't know.
I want to say the last time we looked at that, Sarah, wasn't that around 70%? Seventy to seventy-five percent.
That has it or doesn't have it?
That has it. That has it.
Caring Communities did a survey, I think, two years ago that they shared with us about the same time that the, I think, the Chamber and we did the demographic survey and it was 70%. But that's not just school-age kids, that's looking at our whole population.
Right, right, okay. That, I was just kind of curious, I mean, seeing something like this, I can see where a kid thinking, you know, "I've got to, I've got to go home and I've got to wait till tomorrow before I come back, before I can do this," you know, and there's so much to do and that.
And we've talked to the technology department related to, you know, with our push to one-to-one, you know, getting with, you know, one of our local providers and looking at, you know, providing maybe a discounted access to that at home. I know Big River is our local retailer for that and that's one of the things that is a plan for us, you know, moving forward because obviously, we know what technology can provide. We know the, the doors that it opens and all the great things that students have access with that increased technology, but we do have to make plans for not only that, but also public sites like the library or other locations that actually have the Wi-Fi. So, it's not just a, it doesn't just have to be a home thing, it can be a community piece. And I think that's a very important point.
I know, I found it really interesting. You see this all the time in every roundhouse, but we had our McDonald's night out by Dairy Queen. The number of our high school students that were sitting out there with their laptops, I was just totally amazed about, out there gaining access. So, having the local businesses, restaurants are offering free Wi-Fi.
Free Wi-Fi, yeah, that's, that's why I was wondering if they're having to come back into town.
Yeah.
Because I know Big River is doing it, but they're not, they don't cover the whole school district, I know, because, I know, I'm sitting down there with no internet. I know, exactly. I still got 1960's Encyclopedia.
Ms. Mindy, while you're here, would you mind to tell us a little bit about what's going on with the cheerleader house tour?
Sure. On December 8th, we are offering home tours of different homes within Farmington, historical homes and new homes. Generous people have opened up their homes to us, they'll have them decorated for the holidays. We're selling tickets starting tomorrow and you can get those at the high school. And it's $15 a ticket and a portion of each ticket sold is going to go to the nighttime snack program and then also to benefit the cheerleading program as well. So, that's on December 8th from 1 to 4 and it's just various homes in the Farmington area.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, we're going to move down to the information line. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Mr. Owens, I have a question on your music report. I noticed that, and you may or may not know this answer right now, but on your professional and clerical from 2013, you had 392 employees and then come 2014 response, we have 408. I don't recall hiring that many people, that's why I'm questioning that number.
I don't know.
Okay.
I just, I got those numbers from.
Oh, Ms., okay. Mr. Eaton may have the answer.
Actually, I mean, we, we try to get an accurate count of employees, you use that same number. In terms of reporting to music, obviously, this is for work comp purposes. The bus driver, that's, that's pretty easy to count. The all other employees, if I'm not mistaken, don't hold me to that, but I think it's food service and custodial maintenance. So, the professional clerical basically is everyone else.
Okay.
And I can tell you that it does include part-time, if that helps.
Okay. I just don't remember hiring that many new.
Shows an increase of 17.
Yeah, like I said, it does include part-time, they're not always necessarily, so, I mean, you're talking about, it could be paras, it could be, you know, secretaries.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, you got it?
Got it.
All right. Moving down to discussion items, consideration of band uniform purchase. And we have a guest.
Yes, of course.
Yes. Good evening, Ms. Huck. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
I'm dressed up because I have a concert tonight, but, yeah, I do have a concert. But anyway, when I took over the director of bands position at the high school, I knew that it was coming time for us to think about new band uniforms because the last purchase of those was 2004. And the average life of a band uniform's about eight years. So, and I know from visibly inspecting the uniforms that they're, they're showing their age. The helmets that we've been using were actually purchased, two uniform purchases ago, we reused those when we bought the last ones. And they're getting very yellowed and they just don't look white anymore. So, in December of last year, I began investigating a uniform design, visited with some representatives and they drew up a, you know, a mock-up. And so, we've kind of been through the process and we had a sample made and that's when I started talking to Mr. Rubel. So, that's basically the process that I've gone through and now it's, you know, in your hands for approval or not. And I do have a live model, if you'd like to see.
Absolutely. I think they look sharp.
Just go right there, front and center.
One of the things about band uniforms, just like any type of clothing, is there are trends in fashion and things get improved and modified as time goes by. If any of you in here were in band, you remember they weren't necessarily the most comfortable things to wear and they used to be made out of 100% wool, which was really not comfortable. Nowadays, with the more competitive marching, students need to be able to be moving freely. They have to do body movement as well as just standing and playing. And our climate is warmer now and we have a lot more warm weather performances than we do cooler. So, these uniforms actually weigh less than the uniform in the past and they're made of fabric which is, has moisture-wicking capabilities, also breathes a little better, and it has a little bit of a stretch. So, they are machine washable or they can be dry cleaned. You can ask Wyatt how he feels about them because he's worn the other uniform.
So, making that, so, making that comparison, how, how does it feel?
I can actually move comfortably. The other uniforms, in marching band, we do a lot of visuals and sometimes it gets a bit straining and you don't know if you're going to be able to perform correctly with this. Well, I can put it on and I can move 100%. It's very comfortable. The other ones, there's a lot more parts to it, it's very complicated, it's very, it's just not very comfortable. It looks good, but this is very simple, but it feels half the way to the other uniforms. It's very comfortable.
So, it's got your seal of approval?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It looks, you look great.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
As a uniform mom, the black is much easier to keep.
Oh, absolutely.
So, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I, we were just saying that we like the black look, black to black.
Well, we're going back to, the Black Knight marching band is, is who we are, so.
Can you play a little, little song?
You notice he forgot his reed, he doesn't.
Oh, I was going to ask you to play Misty Farm.
and they're made of fabric which is, has moisture-wicking capabilities, also breathes a little better, and it has a little bit of a stretch. So, they are machine washable or they can be dry cleaned. You can ask Wyatt how he feels about them because he's worn the other uniform.
So making that, so making that comparison, how, how does it feel?
I can actually move comfortably. The other uniforms, in marching band, we do a lot of visuals, and sometimes it gets a bit straining, and you don't know if you're going to be able to perform correctly with this. Well, I can put it on and I can move 100%. It's very comfortable. The other ones, there's a lot more parts to it. It's very complicated. It's very, it's just not very comfortable. It looks good, but this is very simple, but it feels half the way to the other uniforms. It's very comfortable.
So it's got your seal of approval?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. It, it looks, you look great.
Well, thank you.
As, as a uniform mom, the black is much easier to keep.
Oh, absolutely.
So that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I, I, we were just saying that we like the black look, match the black.
Well, we're going back to back, the Black Knight marching band is, is who we are, so.
Can you play a little, a little song?
You notice he forgot his reed. He doesn't.
I was going to ask you to play Misty Farm.
I like playing at home because I was.
Oh, okay. Good.
That was a good answer.
That was a good answer.
Well, thank you so much for, for coming in this evening. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Very good.
You look, you look fabulous. Any questions, anyone?
I, I just have one or a couple, and it really, I'm done with you guys. I know, I know you're probably nervous then, right? I've been there myself. But my only question was, and it's kind of towards Linda and Don and everything, this is a big purchase and everything, and we've kind of already had the budget. Is there money that's budgeted for this that we can, you know, do this and that?
As always, you know, we're, we're not even halfway through our fiscal. So, you know, when you take on something additional, and this is not unusual, whether it be band uniforms or something else, you're going to have some unexpected things come up.
Right.
And you look for other pockets in the budget where you're not going to spend all that money and cover that. And I feel pretty confident that we can do that. We've actually talked about splitting the purchase up over two fiscal years.
Yeah.
And I think the company is willing to work with us.
Oh, I mean, I'm off, I'm off far because I, I agree that if they're nine years old, they need to be replaced and everything. But I, I just kind of would think that if we know we're going to do something like this and we're looking at the budget, you know, that, that could be part saying, you know, tell the board and say, "Yeah, we're, we're looking at this, and this is probably going to be rung and everything." I mean, if you've been doing this for a couple of months, trying to figure it out, you know.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I think too, over, over a five-year period, I think the band boosters are going to help with the purchase.
Yeah.
And, and so I think that kind of lessens the blow. And I talk, you know, unfortunately, those band uniforms are just real expensive. And I'm just amazed we got nine years out of the other.
Yeah, oh, I, I agree, and everything.
But we're, we're going to try to work out a way, like, to put that in the, along with the athletic stuff we do, some kind of uniform rotation.
And I think that's one of the things that we talked about in detail, and I've already actually talked to Pat related to that, is, is setting up that uniform rotation and getting back to that. I think we used to order those, and I think we kind of went away from that. And I, one of the pieces, since we know, you know, you've got football uniforms that you're ordering a lot and they're very expensive. You've got band uniforms, you know, so you're looking at those pieces, and you kind of know when that's going to roll around so we can actually schedule for that and provide maybe two years of a budget moving forward. So in nine or 10 years, when, you know, Linda's still here and doing a great job, we can, we will have, we will have another great uniform picked out by her and her staff.
And I, I guess I understand that the kids take care of the uniforms themselves or?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, well, I, I just took it for granted when she said that it's easier to keep clean.
We have a nice group of volunteer parents. The uniforms are kept at school.
Right.
And that's one reason why we've gotten the mileage out of the other ones. They do not take them home. They're bulk cleaned at our prison, actually.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, indeed.
Any other questions, anybody? Thank you so much and good luck tonight for your concert. Okay, so I think we're ready to move to some action. I'm going to need a motion to approve all items as consensual.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor? No opposition. Okay, next, I need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn to closed session as personnel. Legal and real estate, six, ten, point, oh, two, one, paragraphs one, two, three, six, thirteen, and fourteen.
Davis?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, parents. We appreciate it.